Council members Ridgway and Nichols are absent.
All right. Today is the, uh, the day which we're going to be having the, uh, discussing the swimming pool issues, but before we get to that, I go through the council and find out from the council if they have any items on the agenda that they would like to have clarified by the staff. Councilmember Curry.
I just have a minute's correction. Do you do that now or do it later on?
Pardon?
Later on? Okay, thank you. I have nothing.
Mr. Selig.
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Rosansky.
If they can clarify the general plan for me, that would be great. Other than that, I'll move on. Later on, okay.
We'll handle that. Councilmember Daigle?
Uh, yes, I had a question on item number four. It's a contract for a workers' compensation third-party administrative services. And I noticed in attachment B that there are four firms that bid less than the, um, service provider that staff is recommending we award this contract to.
Yes, Lauren Farley, our public, I mean, our, uh, risk manager could come up and address that.
Yes, member, uh, Mayor and members of the city council, the bids that we received, um, do have a, uh, spread of them between about three hundred and eighty-two thousand roughly, and it tops out at about six hundred and seventy-six thousand. Um, we, in evaluating those bids, we look at the qualifications of the claims adjusters, qualifications of the company that can provide those services in addition to their, um, computer, um, systems and those kinds of things. So it isn't just a price-driven quote, as you see here.
Okay, when I was reviewing the staff report, it indicated that one of the reasons that you're recommending the current contractor is a comfortable working relationship with that contractor?
That's correct. We've been with the, um, with Hazel Ridge Risk Management Services for approximately ten years. Uh, we've been lucky to have been able to formulate a partnership with the city of Costa Mesa, um, for this dedicated unit. Otherwise, we couldn't, we couldn't touch the price on it and get the service we're getting. And we've also been additionally, um, uh, lucky to have the same claims adjuster examiner for that same ten-year period, which is pretty unheard of in the industry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lauren, just to follow up on that one, one more comment. So this decision was not made just by city staff, but by Costa Mesa's staff also?
Correct, and we also had on our interview panel, um, a workers' compensation claims manager from the city of Santa Ana, who, uh, they do a self-administer program. They have an in-house program, so they're pretty well-versed on the programs coming from third-party administrators, how to run a self-administered program, and the costs associated with both of those.
Thank you. I have no questions myself. Anybody else have any other items? All right, then the next item on our agenda is Mr. Kiff, I believe, is going to give us a presentation on the aquatics options for the Santa Ana Heights Regional Recreation Center. Mr. Kiff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. There will actually be a number of folks, uh, coming forward to the podium to, uh, to be a part of this presentation. And I know there are actually folks in the audience who wanted to spend some time with you talking about their ideas. And just as a reminder for the people in the audience, and the people at home, on a study session like this, the council doesn't take an action, um, and it's more of an opportunity for a relatively extensive dialogue. There is always an opportunity for public comment. So, um, at the conclusion of the discussion of this item by councilmembers and Q and A, there's an opportunity for folks in the audience to come up and offer their opinion as well.
One other thing, Mr. Kiff, uh, we have a very long, uh, closed session, agenda item, and so that I would like to see if we can conclude our, our comments and testimony by 5:30. That'll give us almost a full hour and a half, so.
Great.
Can we work towards that, please?
And the councilmembers at your, at your chairs, you have a packet of information. We're going to roll through that packet of information with you, so you can follow along. And I'm going to get right into it here. If, uh, Mr. Curry could help me with lights. This is what we're going to cover today, um, a little bit of background on the Santa Ana Heights Community Center project, including some of the surveys that were completed before the design of the community center. There's a YMCA survey, and there was a city survey. Then we're going to, I'm going to show you again the facility design, which you've seen before, but it's a good thing to remind ourselves about, and note that there is pretty strong consensus on the type of the building, but why we're here is there was not strong consensus on the pool.
Dave, can I ask a question at this, um, stage?
Uh, yes.
Okay. When you mentioned, uh, there was consensus on, um, the other aspects of the, of the facility, it's my understanding that would be between the city administration, the PAC, and the YMCA?
Yes.
Okay. And that the project is now entering the phase of going through, uh, City of Newport Beach public hearings?
That's correct. We, uh, the traditional phase would be concept design, and that's, in effect, done, at least for the building, and then you go into design development, which would involve more extensive dialogue. And while we bring in it, brought this project to you once before, councilmember, there's certainly an opportunity to revisit it at this time in the process.
And what might be helpful, if you can give us some insights into this consensus process? It's my understanding that the Y, for example, they had an interest in the fitness center, they made a splash park, um, they had an indifference towards. If you could kind of, um, lay out for us, please, what each of the various stakeholders, um, were wanted in this process?
Okay. And then, um, as, as noted, we'll go into the conceptual design drawings. Those were completed in November of '05. And then, um, we're going to make sure everybody in, at council and the audience knows what are the existing aquatics programs? What does the YMCA do? What does the city do? And then the next part of the proposal, of the presentation, is the pool options. And you're going to hear from at least two different folks. JZMK Architects is the group that designed the community center, and they've been asked to do, um, four site plans that, uh, look at types of pools that might fit within the existing concept design. And, uh, they're not specialized aquatic design folks, but, um, they're, they're certainly able, just like any, but, any architect would, to put that down onto the, um, onto the schematic. So they've done that. And then following JZMK, uh, we at the city had asked a aquatic design group to come forward. They're actually folks who would then take those designs and refine them. So their, that, their specialty is pool design. They're going to talk about the things noticed, noted in the bullets. Then we'll go into a discussion and Q and A, as noted, there are some folks in the audience who wanted to make a brief presentation as well. If possible, it'd be good to hold questions to the end, because I think we're going to cover a lot and may answer some of your questions, but certainly if you feel like chiming in, please do so. So quick background on the, on the Santa Ana Heights project. Remember, Santa Ana Heights is in a county redevelopment project area, and it's blighted by basically noise from John Wayne Airport. It has a project advisory committee, or PAC, that advises the board of supervisors on community interests. PAC had asked that redevelopment dollars be used to purchase and renovate or reconstruct the YMCA at 2300 University Avenue. They asked the county to do this. In 2003, the board of supervisors agreed to allocate eleven point five million for the project, if the city would actually own and manage it as a regional recreational facility. And the city and the board have a written agreement to this effect, and that was approved by your council. Mr. Rosansky?
I'm sorry to have to ask a question, but can you just tell me how the PAC members are appointed, if you know?
PAC members are appointed by the board of supervisors, and they, um, uh, tend to have to be residents of, of the project area in which they reside, and they're advisory to the board of supervisors.
And do they serve a certain period of time, or how does that work?
Uh, listen. Three years.
Thank you.
But subject to reappointment.
Correct.
Thank you.
There, as noted, there are two different surveys done, and then for, from 2004 and 2005, we spent most of that time designing the facility, not the pool side, but the building side.
Dave, can you just back up when, when you talked about the regional recreational center? Can you, um, comment on benefit within the context of redevelopment agencies? Does that benefit have to be exclusive to the project area, or can it be more encompassing?
Redevelopment law says that, uh, any project constructed should benefit the project area, but can have benefits outside of the project area as well. Just has to have some link to the project area. So the YMCA survey, this was, this was, remember, think about designing a building. We went out and the YMCA and the city both went out and did a survey to see what, what should be in that building and, and the ground. So here's who was surveyed. It was January of 2004. I'm not going to go through all the survey results. They're in your packet. You note the importance of aquatics there, that, um, residents responded to these types of aquatic, uh, programs they'd like offered at the community center. There's also a city survey done. This was sent to, um, 600 Santa Ana Heights residents and done in March 2004. This was assisted, uh, Cal State Long Beach did this for us. And you could see, again, there's a, a strong interest in additional swimming pool facilities, and it runs down from picnic areas to, uh, even a library, tennis courts. And then it's, it's in priority order there on the right.
Were those categories selected by the group who did the survey, or was that a fill-in kind of thing?
They were selected by the surveyor.
Thank you.
This is the recreation program at Cal State Long Beach, so they had some familiarity with recreation surveys. And, uh, continuing on down here, just type of program needs. Again, those are in your packet.
So the other one's facilities, and this one is programs.
So getting into the design of the community center, as noted, there was strong agreement on the building design, and I'll talk a little bit to try to address Councilmember Daigle's thoughts. We did indeed, uh, sit down over several meetings based on these surveys. We sat down with a couple of members of the PAC, a couple of members of the Y, uh, and the architect, and that's JZMK, and then the city staff was generally Marie and myself. Andrea McGuire sometimes, I think Matt Lor joined us sometimes. And eventually, we hammered out the building design fairly cooperatively, which you'll see, see in the next couple of screens. There were differing opinions on the pools, and I wanted to try and summarize what those differing opinions were. Some of the Y members wanted a longer pool for lap swimming and club practice. Other Y members wanted to make sure the deep warm-water therapeutic pool option stayed. And then Y staff have indicated to us that they, if a pool is too large, it kind of falls out of their fiscal picture, and they would expect that, um, the city might, should, should participate in the maintaining a pool that was that big. Again, continuing with the differing opinions, swim groups, swim clubs, masters groups, et cetera, would seek a longer pool for some long-course training and flexibility to break the pool into sections and maybe have some regional meets. Um, city staff, it's been the staff's position that we'd like more pool time for lessons, water aerobics, and recreational facilities that are not involved in, for, for families, not involved in competitive programs. And then, um, just putting on our budget hat, uh, concerned about the cost of maintaining a larger pool, especially a meet pool. And then, uh, as Councilmember Da, members Daigle and Ridgway have articulated, advocating for some combination that allowed for the maximum use of a pool, including some long-course training, not necessarily meets nor water polo. And then, uh, wanted to make sure, express what some of the PAC members have, have said to us. They believe that the smaller pool, at least the ones that have spoken to me, with the recreational facility, would better serve as a community gathering area, and that was kind of their vision for the facility. And with a meet pool, more concerned about the noise and traffic impacts involving a meet and the whistles of water polo. So, and that's similar to what the concerns of University Drive and Anniversary Track folks, some of whom participate in PAC. So this was the concept pla, plan that came out of that discussion. You could see, uh, the building itself there, completely renovated from what it is today, and then a three-aquatic facility option with a, what is a twenty-five by thirty-five meter pool, a splash park element, and then a deep water, or a warm-water therapy pool. And this is the upper story.
Dave, can you go back to that? What, what's that area to the, the far right? What is that supposed to be?
Area of the, of light tan to the far right?
Yes.
That's a terrace function area, so you could have, uh, picnics or gatherings out there.
Like hardscape, though? That's a hardscape area?
I think it's an option. It could be hardscape or softscape. I think in this plan, it was envisioned to be hardscape, some type of decking.
It is in hardscape now, though.
It's not now. It's earth now.
Thank you.
This is just the second story, just in case you wanted to come back to that. And, um, as, again, as Councilmember Daigle noted, this, there's a, the Y's interest was to make sure that this facility had a fitness component. So there's the fitness gym right up there on the second story, along with ancillary facilities below it, including the gymnasium, the locker rooms. The community space side is kind of on the right. You could see multipurpose rooms with, um, slider, sliding walls that would retract and pull out depending on the size of the, uh, room. And thanks again to Mayor Webb for the pointer.
Dave, is it correct that the PAC wanted some level of, um, community rooms, and then the city, uh, staff said, let's have more than that level? I mean, what is the, how do we reach the amount of, um, community, uh, center rooms that, uh, are in place now or proposed?
I don't remember a specific discussion about PAC wanting more or less community rooms. I think we went into it saying that there were certain types of programs that should be run in a neighborhood-type, uh, community center, mostly the navigator classes that the PAC members would, by nature, want to participate in, and this tended to be the right space for that. There's also some quieter rooms in their, uh, library slash computer center. So there's both the more active recreation and the more passive, just come down to the community center, read a book or read a paper. But I think we pretty much knew to the end, Gelled, that this, this was the right amount of space for us.
The, the basketball court there, where did, what was the impetus for that?
Uh, the gymnasium there on the left is just, uh, increasing need in our community, uh, citywide for, for closed-in gym space.
That's a full-court basketball?
Full court, yeah. Right now, it's an outdoor court at the YMCA there.
Thank you.
So now we're going to roll into what types of aquatics programs are offered today. We do have folks from the Y here, so, uh, they may come up and comment later, but I'm, in the interest of time, I was going to roll through their programs. They have two pools. They have a twenty-five yard by fourteen yard rec pool with six lanes, and an eleven yard by ten yard therapeutic pool. You can see they offer swim lessons, lap swim, rec swim, aquatic water therapy, swim teams. They have a youth swim team, master swim, and one for Special Olympics. And then other programs that are offered at that facility are some limited water polo, junior lifeguard training, scuba classes. Their aquatic priorities, according to the Y, are swim lessons, then therapy, then lap swim, then rec swim, then swim team. And when they discuss their facility needs, they noted to us, uh, they'd like to continue to serve the current clientele and be able to expand programming in the future. So a larger pool than they have now. You could see preferably twenty-five by thirty or twenty-five by thirty-five, which would, uh, more than double the size of the current pool from six to twelve to fourteen lanes, and at least a warm-water therapy pool to continue to serve the over fifty percent of their members who are age, of age sixty. And that would be about twenty-five percent larger than the current warm-water pool.
Uh, one thing I might want to point out about the seniors, it was brought to my attention by some seniors, is that, uh, some of them also use the, the larger pool. And I know these days, I mean, some of our seniors are really fit. Uh, I was bicycling in Italy, and sixty girls were passing me all over the place.
Sure, that's very true. Both the fitness-type pool and the warm-water pool will be used by those groups. I'm going to hand it over to Marie now, because Marie's most familiar with what the city's own current aquatics programs are.
Thank you. Um, I just want to briefly roll through this, but a little bit of history on, on our rec programming in general, and our philosophy, and how we approach our rec programming, is that several years ago, through city ordinance, we were directed to directly cover eighty-five percent of the costs of providing most of our recreational programs and services, including our aquatics programs. And to do that, the philosophy that's been established then is that we look at serving the masses, beginner to immediate level, intermediate level, and the things that we do. Sort of an all-play approach, so that public recreation in Newport Beach is for the majority of the folks, and that's how we program, that's how we look at our facilities, our design. When we're coming up with new programs, we make it inclusive versus exclusive. We do offer special interest activities, though, and those are designed then to completely pay for themselves, and they're operated through classes, like our contract class programs, where the user pays the fee, the entire fee or the cost for that service. Currently, as you may be aware, we don't own our own pool. We have several joint-use agreements throughout the community for our programs. Yes, Leslie?
Marie, I have a question for you. I know that currently, um, your department has more than three hundred thousand users of, uh, rec programs. Um, you have some of the largest adult leagues in the county. Do you believe that your staff has the capability or could develop the capacity to run a fifty-meter pool?
Could we develop the capacity? Absolutely. There's always the potential to develop and to increase staff to do that. It's just a matter of, I think, the direction that we get from the council as far as our philosophy. Is that a fifty-meter competitive pool? Is it a fifty-meter rec pool? But certainly, we have the capacity. We run programs at the pools that we have our joint-use agreements with, so that's, that's not an issue. We have a joint-use at the Marion Bergerson Aquatic Center. We offer swim lessons there in the summertime, recreational swim, which is open drop-in swim for families that want to bring their children for a day at the pool or an afternoon at the pool. Um, we do lifeguard training of our lifeguards there, adult lap swim. We have a contract-class water polo team, as well as a contract-competitive swim team. And then we do rentals. We rent out to, um, Sage Hills for some of their programs. I've got a couple of charts. As you'll see, during the summer versus the regular school season, our use of the Marion Bergerson Center, um, differs quite dramatically. Obviously, during the summertime, we have a greater use because school is not in use. But the school takes up the morning hours, so our lap swimmers are not able to do morning lap swims, which is, um, oftentimes what we find preferable. And during the school year, our use is much more restricted, and we're in Marion Bergerson mostly in the afternoons to the evenings, and then some Saturday and Sunday use. In addition, we also have use at the Harbor High School Pool, and that's summertime only. And we do, again, swim lessons. We focus on the rec programs, water aerobics, lap swim. Um, we also have an agreement at the Bayside Village Pool where we do an arthritis aquatics program, and Newport Dunes, we've been working with them for many years in the Newport Beach Tennis Club to do our water aerobics and power workout. Our feeling is, from a recreational aquatic needs in Newport Beach, one, we lack a facility that's designed to provide swim lessons. And what I mean by that is that it is much easier to teach especially young children to swim when you have a pool that has a zero-depth entry or a shallow end. So you don't have to have the children clinging to the side and holding on to the side of the pool while they're trying to learn how to swim. It's much ea, much easier to teach the young ones when they can stand in the water. We don't have that ability currently. We lack time to teach classes during the school year, obviously, because the two pools that we do work with, um, have that majority of the use during the school year. And we lack the opportunity for recreational swim. Most communities in Orange County that operate their own pools have an extensive rec swim program, where families can just buy a summer pass or an annual pass. The kids can come for a two-hour, four-hour block, whatever is offered, and swim. In a large fifty-meter deep pool, which is the two that we offer, there's not a huge comfort level on the part of parents to drop their child off to have fun in a pool that's above their children's head. We would really look forward to having someplace in town where we could offer that amenity. A lot of folks say, well, we have the beach. We have, we're surrounded by water. But if you ask a lot of parents, they would prefer that their kids are not learning to swim one in the ocean. That's a difficult place to teach children to swim. But it's also not as safe to just drop your kids off and have them supervised at the beach. There is no such program. And we also need, we feel, more lap swimming times and lanes, especially weekday mornings and through the lunch hours. Um, we are constantly being, receiving those requests from our lap swimmers. I'm going to turn this back to Dave.
Okay, as noted, the next part of the presentation is about some of the options for pools and pool sizes. And, uh, the first, uh, options are, are going to be shown by JZMK Architects, and Don Jacobs is here. I'm going to let Don come up to the podium, and Don, I'll move the computer for you.
Thank you, Mayor Webb and councilmembers. My name is Don Jacobs. I'm, uh, principal with JZMK Partners, and I'm also a resident of Corona del Mar, here in Newport Beach. So it's, uh, great to be able to work on a project in our own backyard, because we work all over the world. So this is great. Well, this is, uh, the scheme that you saw, uh, first, which was, uh, where we started. And let's, we have three schemes. We did the fifty, uh, meter length with the, um, leg off to the, uh, lower right, and then the splash pool off to the, to the left.
Now, for people who can't see that leg off to the right, then that's the third pool?
Yeah, yes.
That would have been a heated pool, that, as opposed to the regular pool, or the whole thing would have been heated?
That, uh, my understanding, yes, it, um, the whole, would have to be, the whole thing would have to be heated.
Right. I think when we talked to your partner, Bill Woodson.
Bill Woodson, yes.
His scheme, and was that the area that would be sort of designated for warmer water? You know, either through accelerating the speed of the jets or whatever, that, that somehow that wa, water would be warmer, that there?
It could be. It could be.
That, that's what his thinking was?
So, um... Yeah, that, the next one is taking two twenty-five, uh, meter pools each and placing them about the only place they can be placed. And then the, uh, therapeutic pool, again, on the right, and splash pool staying on the left.
And why would you have two separate pools?
Pardon?
Why would you have two separate pools?
Uh, so you could have different programs, uh, running at the same time.
Is there different depths to the pools or something, or?
They...
We'll, we'll get into those details in the next part, um, because, yes, you're right, councilman, or Mayor Brotem, you could have different depths, you could have different temperatures, you could have different layouts.
More variety, more flexibility.
But couldn't you have that same programming flexibility with the use of lane lines as well and bulkheads?
In a fifty-meter pool, you mean?
Probably, probably, yes. And the, uh, scheme three is the, uh, full fifty-meter pool. Oh. Again, the therapeutic pool on the right, splash pool on the left, all separated. Probably the one that fits the space the best, which I think is, becomes obvious when you look at it.
Let me ask a question. Is a splash pool designed to be, to accommodate, uh, young children's swimming lessons? As Marie indicated earlier, the need for a shallow pool for that?
That's...
It, it can be that, councilman, and also the, actually, the orientation of this splash park, rather than a splash pool, is that it's a zero-depth entry, that it, similar to like, uh, the fountains at Fashion Island, where the kids would go and play in, in sprinklers, et cetera. You may have some depth that's low into a pool, but the rest of it is more kind of fun things to do while you're, while you're about, you're actually on the ground.
All right, but that really doesn't sound then like a pool for swimming lessons. No, okay, thank you.
And then with this scheme, it would seem as if you could have, establish a greater temperature variation between that pool there, which would be senior wa, warm water, and then this pool here?
Yes, you'd have much more control in, in this situation.
Okay, I, I think, Don- Okay, I think, Don, thank you, that was good. I wanted to point out on this slide particularly, the pool width, if you, the pool length is fifty meters, the width is actually twenty meters, and that is, that's an issue in part, because if you wanted to flip the lane lines and go in a different, go perpendicular to the long course, you wanted to have a short course, typical short courses are twenty-five yards or twenty-five meters. So this is a little bit on the narrow side, that's not to say it wouldn't work. It obviously fits in the space.
No, Dave, I think some of that may have been a miscommunication to the architect.
It may have been.
So it would be possible, then, if we wanted to go to the twenty-five meters, as you're suggesting, there may be some benefit, would there be adequate space to do that?
Barely, yes, it could be done, yes, it could be done.
Did the option that had the little leg out the bottom, was that twenty-five meter or twenty-meter? That one?
That was also a twenty.
Twenty-meter, yes.
That's twenty-meter, okay. Now, in the twenty, well, in the fifty-meter pools, would there be a shallow end here to where you could conduct swimming lessons normally?
Again, that's a good question to ask the next person that comes up, Randy. You can design a fifty-meter pool with a shallow end. The traditional competition or meet pool that's fifty meters would not have a shallow end if you wanted to have regional or national meets, but you could certainly design a non-meet pool that was fifty meters, that had long course training opportunities, and had a shallower end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
What we'd like to do now is, and Councilmember Bodega asked earlier, kind of the process, and where we had gotten to in this process, once we had agreed on some design concepts, would be to look at, as JZMK presented, what could possibly fit in this space, what are some of the concepts. But the next step would have been to bring in a pool designer, an aquatic designer, to look at then, what are some of the constraints, what are some of the requirements? So we've asked Randy Mendioso to come and to talk to us today. He is with Aquatic Design Group, twenty-five years' experience in the business. He has designed over, participated in the design of over two thousand aquatic facilities. Recent current projects in California include the Irvine William Willett Center, the two thousand and four Olympic Swim Trials Pool in Long Beach, the Ray and Joan Crox Salvation Army Aquatic Facility in San Diego, the City of Carlsbad's competitive and rec pools, Santa Clarita's competitive and rec pools, so very extensive background in the design of pools. And what we've asked Randy to do is to look at this site, he's very familiar with this site. He actually did get a call from the architects about six months ago, when we were at this point in this process, to look at, or to, you know, to hopefully be one of the folks to look at this next step and see, one, what fits and what makes sense from the perspective of the different needs of the community and the constraints of the site. So I'd like to introduce Randy and have him come on up and go through his program.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, it's a pleasure for me to be here and spend a few moments sharing some of the knowledge that we've gained over the years as principals of Aquatic Design Group. I can take it from here. What I want to do is just basically outline the presentation for you quickly, talk about some common competition pool sizes, because that seems to be kind of the driving issue here, as to what is appropriate for competitive and recreational use. Talk about what the capabilities by each pool size might be, the different events that you could host within those different sized pools, the required infrastructure as far as number of toilets, urinals, showers, those sorts of things, spectator, parking, those sorts of issues by pool size. Talk a little bit about the capital, you know, initial capital costs to build each sized pool, and what their operating cost might be by size, and then talk a little bit about balancing competition and recreation. And then finally, some cost recovery figures, which I believe you have some hard copies that have been handed out to you of an article that I authored recently in Aquatics International Magazine. So talking about the common sizes, typically, most of the pools that we do, starting at high school level, are typically twenty-five yard by twenty-five meter and up. The YMCA facilities typically operate in the range of six to eight lanes by twenty-five yards, because competition is not as big a factor in the YMCA facilities that we've done. The next step up would be twenty-five yard by thirty meter, and the reason that many of the pools are getting larger, it used to be eighty to ninety percent of our high school facilities were twenty-five yard by twenty-five meter, but as water polo has gained in popularity, to do a floating water polo course, which most hardcore water polo players are looking for, you need the additional length, because you need at least twenty-five yards in all deep water, and then you need a transition in terms of depth to create what we call a regular swimming pool or a non-special-purpose pool. If you have any portion of the pool, if at least one portion of the pool is not three foot six of water depth, then it's considered a special-purpose pool, if it's deeper than three-six. So some portion of the pool has to be three foot six in order to be considered for general recreation or public use, according to the California Building Code. Twenty-five yard by thirty-five meter is becoming somewhat popular in that if you want to host, again, water polo meets, and then have a fairly substantial shallow end on your pool, three, uniform three-foot-six depth for teaching and training, this has become a more popular configuration in recent years. Again, most of it has to do with the requirement for water polo. And then finally, the twenty-five yard, well, actually not finally, but twenty-five yard by fifty meter, which has been discussed. There are two lengths that are basically swum in this country in terms of competition. One would be twenty-five yards predominantly. There is a twenty-five meter short course season as well, but the other one would be fifty meters. I should point out, however, that high school, both high school and NC-2A meets are twenty-five yards. The NC-2A national championships, for example, are all swum twenty-five yards. The primary reason for having a long course pool, in most cases, that people have told us anyway, is that you want to be able to train for long course meters. Many coaches are looking for long course times to get scholarships, for example. If you want to get a scholarship to Cal or Stanford, those long course times are pretty important. So it is a quantum leap to go from seventy-five feet of swimming, which the fastest people in the world do in about nine seconds, to one hundred and sixty-four feet, which they're doing in about twenty-two seconds freestyle. And then, because there is a requirement in most competitive pools for mostly deep water, we're seeing a lot of what we call stretch pools, where there would be a bulkhead set at the fifty-meter dimension, and then we would accomplish a transition from that point to the shallower depths, so that we can actually have recreation swimming going on in the same size, the same type of pool, rather than going to a two-pool complex.
Randy, some of the, kind of the challenges that we're facing in our community, and I appreciate that staff had the usage of our pools, is that in these shared facilities with the school districts, you know, the water polo gets a lot of time.
Right.
So we have a lot of recreational needs, swim lessons, you know, the long course training, lap swimming. So we're maybe thinking more of a venue where, you know, it could be more recreation, and then indeed, in terms of that three-foot-six inch depth, you know, something that small kids could also take lessons.
Sure.
So I think, maybe given our community, in terms of this particular venue, we would probably be looking more at recreation kind of uses.
Yeah, generally, anytime you're trying to do everything in one pool, there's always some compromise involved, and so what happens is, for example, we recommend against the use of starting platforms in water shallower than six foot six. The two thousand and five NC-2A rulebook recently came out with a recommendation for seven feet underneath any starting platform. So what that means is, in the long course dimension, you can only put starting platforms at one end of the pool if you're using it for recreation swim. And that's why we've seen more and more two-pool complexes, more and more stretch pools, so that we can have, starting at both ends of the long course, in deeper water, to avoid any problems with, you know, spinal cord injuries and those sorts of things. So just, you know, as I say, a picture tells a thousand words, or speaks a thousand words. To give you an idea of pool size, these are just some examples of different projects. Twenty-five yard by twenty-five meter pool, again, most of what you need for a dual meet would be eight lanes of twenty-five yard swimming for any high school meet, or even a small Division Two or Three college or community college meet. So that can be satisfied in a twenty-five yard by twenty-five meter pool. If you go to the next option, which would be a twenty-five yard by thirty-meter pool, you just get a little bit more area so that you can put, in this case, the image on the left shows fixed water polo cages, those are attached to the wall of the swimming pool, but you would have, in this sized pool, the ability to host floating water polo. What that means is, the goalie is on a level playing field. If you look at that image on the left, it's easy for the goalie to push off the pool wall to block a shot. Most of the other competitors would prefer that the goalie be treading water just like the rest of them, so that's why we're seeing more and more of these types of facilities. The next step up would be a twenty-five yard by thirty-five meter pool, and again, this gives you a fairly generous area. You can see the floating water polo cage set up there in the middle of the pool. In the image on the right, you see the shallow end, and that just allows for more room to do the transition, the transition from the deeper water to shallower water, and give you a nice, at least ten, fifteen, twenty-foot, uniform three-and-a-half-foot shallow end. Twenty-five yard by fifty meter, and this is one you're probably familiar with, just across town at the Willett Aquatic Center. We actually did two fifty-meter pools there. One go, this one is the main competition pool, which has a uniform depth of seven feet, and they do primarily swimming and water polo here. That gentleman on the left is Michael Phelps, was recently at the duel in the pool between USA and Australia. There's also a multipurpose pool on the other side of the bleacher seating that you see on the right, that incorporates a shallower depth, although it's not three foot six. It goes from approximately five feet to fourteen feet, and that's where they host the diving And then finally, an example of a stretch pool that we did recently for UC Davis. This one incorporates the use of two bulkheads, you can practice all three sports simultaneous, well, not all three, but swimming, diving, and water polo all at the same time, and by accomplishing these bulkhead moves, you can cordon off the deepest area for swimming. In the image on the left, you can see the bulkhead, the movable bulkhead, and, you know, just down the pool a little ways. And then you can also segregate water polo in the middle and swimming at the shallow end.
Randy, could you explain movable bulkheads and lane lines?
Sure. What the movable bulkhead is, is it's basically a large, either stainless steel or fiberglass structure, that's anywhere from four to eight feet wide, and it has a bladder inside of it, an air bladder, that you fill up with air. It's kind of like a submarine, you know, you fill the ballast tank, if you will, with air, and it allows the bulkhead to float, and so you can actually move the bulkhead back and forth along the length of the pool in this case, and to set different courses up, you know, for competitive swimming, water polo, and so on. And so we're seeing this a lot lately in these stretch-style pools, and they can be useful for, for example, for officiating during water polo meets and so on.
In addition to a competitive application, could you also use the bulkhead, for example, to have swim lessons in one half and synchronized swimming in the other half?
Potentially. The only problem with the bulkhead is that the current state guidelines mandate that the pool be at least seven feet where the bulkhead is, and so what happens is, it necessarily has to be a deep pool, because the health code, the officials are concerned about people getting trapped underneath the bulkhead, and so they require at least three feet of water from the underside of the bulkhead to the pool floor. So you can't push the pool, the bulkhead, in any shallower depth than seven feet typically.
Could you use a lane line as sort of a allocator of space?
Oh, sure, yeah, people do that all the time. In terms of competition capabilities, I can't speak, by pool size, now, this is probably hard to read, but I believe you have a handout in your material that was prepared for you, which has a few notes and so on, but basically, what this chart illustrates is what you can do in each pool in terms of the competitive courses, and I won't spend a lot of time going over that. Basically, what you're seeing is, is your, the only limitation as far as swimming is concerned would be, obviously, you couldn't do the long course fifty-meter length in anything shorter than a fifty-meter pool. Most of the other programs can be accommodated, depending on the type of water polo setup, again, in a twenty-five yard by twenty-five meter to a twenty-five yard by thirty-five meter. The only thing that is limited, as I said, is the long course swimming in any of the other configurations besides a fifty-meter. What we thought we'd do is just tell you what the required infrastructure might be for each pool size, going a little bit more detail. On the twenty-five yard by twenty-five meter, you've got a deck footprint of one hundred and fifteen by one twenty-seven. You've got a bathhouse requirements, basically, now, keep in mind that we already have an existing building on this project, and so there would be some overlap in terms of, you know, there might be some shared uses, some synergy between the community center use and the swimming pool use, but if this were a standalone facility, this is what it would represent in terms of a footprint of a building that would be needed to service the pool. And approximately, if you're talking competitive meets, typically, you're gonna have a spectator seating for three to four hundred folks perhaps. In the twenty-five yard by twenty-five meter, you'll need at least eighty-eight cars for parking, based upon the actual number of people that can fit within that pool. That is exclusive of any competitive meets. And then a site footprint of approximately one point eight acres. On the twenty-five yard by thirty-meter pool, we've got a deck footprint of one fifteen by one forty-three, four to five thousand, four thousand to forty-five hundred square feet of bathhouse, spectator seating roughly three fifty to four fifty, parking, one hundred and five cars, site footprint of two point one acres, again, with building, parking, and bathhouse, and pool, excuse me. On the thirty-five meter of deck footprint, again, we're assuming twenty feet of deck all the way around the perimeter, which is desirable in most of our installations. Most of the programming that we do, the coaches and competitors are looking for that. Bathhouse footprint of five to fifty-five hundred square feet, spectator seating of about four hundred, parking, one hundred and twenty-two cars, and a site overall footprint of two point four acres. On the fifty, one fifteen by two oh nine, it's a much larger footprint on the deck, a bathhouse of seven to seventy-five hundred square feet, a minimum of five hundred, and if you wanted a large competitive meet, you might have as many as twenty-five hundred people at those meets. Parking for a hundred and seventy-five cars, based upon the pool footprint, not the meet footprint, and a site footprint of three point two acres.
Now, Randy, all of those would, or at least the seating, that would kind of be optional, depending on whether or not we wanted to have a competition or not, or a recreation pool.
That's optional, absolutely. You bet. Absolutely. The initial capital costs, again, which do not include the site work, the pool decks, the deck, you know, the landscaping or buildings, in current, in today's dollars, this is no escalation, but based upon, if you bid this project today, you know, April of two thousand and six, for the twenty-five yard by twenty-five meter pool, you're talking an order of magnitude of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand. For the thirty-meter, a million twenty-nine. Thirty-five meter, a million one ninety-seven. And the fifty-meter, a million seven twenty-two. For operating costs, and this is, again, basically, water, electricity, natural gas, and chemicals. This does not include labor or maintenance, you know, capital funding, any of that sort of thing. This is just to operate the pool itself. Hundred and twenty-seven thousand, this is based upon, these are fairly conservative figures, fifteen cents a kilowatt hour for natural gas, and eighty-five cents a therm for natural, excuse me, fifteen cents a kilowatt hour for electricity, and eighty-five cents a therm for natural gas. The thirty-meter, a hundred and fifty-two, seven forty-one. Thirty-five meter, one seventy-seven, six seventy-eight. And the fifty-meter, two fifty-five, six oh seven.
Looks like that's a straight line, the fifty-meter's just exactly twice as big as the twenty-five meter.
Yeah, it's all a function of water surface area.
Okay.
And so it's almost a straight-line progression.
So it's not, so it's water surface as opposed to overall water volume, like if you were to have less, a more shallow?
The shallower pools will be less expensive to operate and maintain, because there is a little bit of a factor with respect to depth. The depth of the pool can make a difference, but in terms of the overall heat loss, for example, about eighty percent of it is due to water surface area, and the remaining twenty has factors like the depth of the pool and, you know, other issues.
Randy, it seemed like on the previous slide, the construction costs?
Yes, sir.
Also was straight line?
Yes, approximately a hundred and forty dollars per square foot of water surface.
I mean, there's no cost savings?
It starts to, it starts to go down a little bit as you... It starts to, it starts to go down a little bit as you start getting into bigger pool sizes, like the 65 meter, it starts dropping to the 120 a square foot.
I mean, I think once you're digging a hole, not that much more expensive to dig a bigger hole, is it? Or maybe it is?
I'm, I'm really considering reactivating my contractor's license because I'm in the wrong business right now.
Yeah, we all are.
The pool contractors are making a lot of money. I, I wish it were otherwise, but we, we bid about six or eight projects a month, and these are what the numbers are coming in at. And again, these are fairly conservative figures.
Thank you.
In terms of the site impact, what we did was we, and again, with, with deference to the architect, you know, we've had about a week's notice on this, and, and they've spent the last year or two on this project, so we were given a copy of the, of the, of the site plan that the architects had prepared, and what we did was we took a known dimension on the site plan, scaled a pool to that known dimension, and were able to insert them, which I will do right now. For example, that is, that represents the footprint of a 25 yard by 25 meter pool on that particular site, on this existing site. And so, we have room for potentially 15 feet on the north and south of, of pool decking, and obviously, there's a lot of room left over. We tried to respect the area that is to the right beyond the, the planted areas there, that tree line or vegetation line. It was our understanding that was being reserved, as was mentioned previously, for a, you know, like a function space that was being operated by the YMCA. The next configuration is the 25 by 30, and you see that the pool gets just a little bit bigger there. Again, the, the only concern that we would have in this configuration is, is the, is the nor, the decking on the north and south sides of the pool. It's getting a little bit tight, it's not the 20 feet that we'd like to see, and, and again, believe me, I don't want to step on any toes as far as the architect is concerned. I wouldn't suggest that they move their building north or south on the page, but, but that seems to be the only way that that could happen, is to get, to get the adequate number of, of feet of decking around the perimeter, assuming that 20 feet is what's desired.
Randy, wouldn't that be true even if it wasn't a competitive pool?
Yes, that's true, yeah. If, if we, if we're dealing with the 25 yard dimension, yeah, that's, that's correct. The 35 meter pool, again, just gets a little bit bigger, you know, you see it starting to get a little bit tight on the southwest corner there on the 35 meter, but I think it's still workable potentially. Where we have a little bit of concern, obviously, is in this next scheme with the long course pool, where the, the corner of the pool is right on the curb at University Drive in this scheme, and this is, I think, because it's, we're using a dimension of 25 yards versus 20 meters, which was done previously in some of the schemes that were developed by the architects.
And if you weren't respecting the, the function area, that could be moved in the other.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Do you have a problem with pools that are constructed in filled areas, where part of the pool, pool is in a cut area and parts of the fill area?
Um, no, it just takes additional money. It's, it's all a function of, of the dollars, really. We've, we've, we've built pools in some very interesting soils conditions, in groundwater, rivers running through them, I mean, it's, it just takes more money to build. Ideally, you want, you know, 2,000 pounds per square foot of compaction and no fill, and, you know, that's, that's what your standard pool price is based upon, but we're doing a project at San Diego State right now where we've got 60 feet of fill, and, and the entire pool is on caissons and friction piles. So it just costs more money. You can build it.
Just a, you know, today's an information forum, so you will have, may have more time to work things out.
In terms of, you know, the next issue was, you know, balancing the competitive versus the recreational use that we wanted to talk about is, you know, in many cases, deep water is preferred for competitive uses, and I think that's been addressed previously, but-
And when you say deep water, that's the six and a half to seven feet?
Six and a half to seven feet, yes. Typically, what we recommend underneath any starting platform, the water polo standards are seven, six and a half feet going to seven. And so, so to, to, over the, the entire water polo course, which is the biggest user of deep water, that entire course has to be seven feet, is what we recommend. So there is a conflict, there can be a conflict between the competitive and recreational uses, if you're trying to do everything in one pool. You know, there is a differential water temperature, it's my understanding and looking, again, and this has been mentioned previously, at the, at the YMCA users of the 2,000 members they have, close to 50% of them are, are 65 and older, and so, in our experience, those users, although I will, I will acknowledge the point that there are a lot of more fit people here in Newport Beach, I would say, perhaps more so than in Carlsbad, but, but basically, what we're, what we're looking at, the competitive and lap and fitness swimmers are looking for a temperature in the range of 78 to 82 degrees Fahrenheit. If it gets much warmer than that, they start to heat up, it's tough, tough to do a good workout. Whereas the recreation swimmers, seniors folks are looking for a range of 84 to 88, and we've done a number of senior facilities where they're complaining about 88, they wanted a 90, 92. So, so it just depends on the user group.
Sounds like my kind of water, 92.
Infrastructure required, and again, I, I think we've covered this issue, but, you know, for large competitive meets, if you build it, they will come, has been our experience, and so that's, you know, the sweet spot for NC2A meets is about 2,500 folks. I think at the duel in the pool, we had close to 5,000 at Woollett Center this past summer. So if you want to host competitive meets, you know, there, there are some infrastructure requirements associated with that.
Yeah, but a 20 foot wide deck doesn't allow many spectators?
No. And, and really, if you're hosting these large meets, you really want to have a buffer between the spectators and the athletes and the officials on the deck. So there's those other issues to take into consideration. And there is, there is a, a difference in the cost recovery in terms of, you know, Marie mentioned earlier, you know, the goal of the city was 85% cost recovery, there can be a substantial difference in the cost recovery between primarily competitive facilities and those that balance competition and recreation. And I'll just cover that just briefly right now. We did a study recently, I believe you have a copy of the article that I authored in Aquatics International, where we looked at a bunch of different facility types, from competition only, indoor, competition only outdoor, and obviously, the indoor facilities don't really play a role here in this case, but it was just part of the study. A combination of competition and recreation where there's at least a 50/50 split between competition and recreation, meaning, if I take competition, I think primarily of rectilinear type pools, and recreation having things like zero depth entries, water slides, wet play elements, those sorts of things. So we looked at both indoor and outdoor facilities for that combination of competition and recreation, so this would be an example, for example, of an outdoor combined facility, if you will. And then also rec only indoor, where there's no competitive uses per se, and rec only outdoor. This is a facility we said, we did for the city of Denton, Texas, which has no rectilinear pools whatsoever. And so when we, when we did our survey, and I believe you have a, a copy of a blank survey form, we just asked these particular groups, there were 24 different facilities that were surveyed, we, we said, we asked them to fill out this information, and it's difficult getting this information frankly. The, the challenge that we have is sometimes in different cities, the revenues are kept by one department, and the operational expenses are kept by another, so we're really asking them to do us a favor. We asked them to fill out their revenue categories, and we tried to break it down to make it easy on them, if you will, and the expense categories, so things like labor and benefits and those sorts of things. And so, after compiling all the results of the survey, what we found that, is that on the average, if you're talking a competition only facility, meaning no recreational components whatsoever, you're averaging between 50 and 60% cost recovery on those competitive only facilities. When you combine competition and recreation, where you've got about a 50/50 split in, in terms of water surface area, for example, or slide attractions or something, you're looking somewhere in the range of 70, 80, 70 to 80%, depending on the ratio. And, and again, this is a broad generalization, but if we're talking recreation only, we have many facilities that were operating at break even and then some. So the, so the best way to meet that goal of 85% cost recovery that was stated earlier is to, is to try and balance the competitive and the recreational needs within the, within the facility, if cost recovery is part of the equation. And, and if that's a high priority. We, we do a lot of facilities that incorporate, like William Woollett Aquatic Center, for example, that incorporate strictly rectilinear pools. Most of our parks and recreation facilities these days tend to have a balance of both competitive and recreational use.
I did review your survey in detail, and one of the things that I noticed is that the revenue generating model that it used was day passes, and the YMCA is a revenue generating model of monthly membership. And that some of the, you know, for example, the Splash Park, they wouldn't be as interested in because it doesn't promote skills development.
Sure.
So I, I think that would probably be helpful, that we know that as well.
Oh, understand. And again, this is a fairly generic study. What we were trying to do is look at why there's this disparity, there seems to be this disparity between primarily competitive only facilities and those that incorporate more recreation. And so with that-
I think that we're kind of running out of time to get much input from the audience, but we have a half an hour left. I think that there was a couple of gentlemen that, Leslie, you wanted to have speak?
I think they requested some time. One is Ron Behrs, who's a master swimmer, is Ron here? Okay. And then the other is the swim coach at the YMCA who has an active program there.
Okay, now we have about 25 minutes, so that if we give each one of them 10 minutes, that means we've got five minutes for audience testimony, so I think I'd like to see them cut down a little bit, see if you can go through it pretty fast.
I can make this very brief. I've been swimming in Newport Beach pools for just about 20 years. Oh, my name is Ron Behrs, I live in Malibu, I'm an architect and master swimmer. Master swimming is a very informal sport, it's impossible to organize, it's a bunch of radical people who do whatever they want to do and, you know, make up their own rules. We have a, you know, an ocean here, so master swimming, because we have the ocean, is very popular. Another thing about master swimming is that if you participate in sports which are more impacting on the body, like running or things like that, the body starts to wear out, you know, some point, 40, 50 years old, you find people going into less impact sports. That's why master swimming takes a big jump, when you look at the demographics of the population, the older the population, the more participants are going to be looking for those opportunities. My whole pitch is that, I was a recreational planner in Hawaii for 20 years. Hawaii had no pools, until the mayor said, you know, we need to have an aquatics master plan, and he's, and it was a very simple master plan, he said, every community should have a pool, period. And that's the master plan, it took 20 years to do. Now, every community has a pool, it balances, they don't, they don't lean towards competition, they don't lean towards recreation, they compromise and meet all of the user groups that they can. The other thing I wanted to just bring up is that, as was mentioned, we have two joint use facilities, Marion Bergerson and Newport Harbor. Joint use means cooperation between the school district and the city. I have been personally involved in trying to get the locker rooms open at Corona del Mar for over 10 years, and I've given up. It's not possible. Joint use means that you have to have these two entities dealing with each other. It also means that if you look at joint use, what does the school need, what does the city need? I think there's a lot of opportunity in looking at all existing facilities to increase and enhance the usability of what we have. We have very poor swimming hours at both of those facilities, well, Newport Harbor, you know, you have to climb over the fence at 5 o'clock in the morning, but other, you know, Corona del Mar, it's, it's weekend and after 6, basically. The other factor, this is my last point, when you look at demand and need and the type of facility, it's not just the accommodation of all these people, it's the quality of the experience that you're going to provide. I mean, you can, you can build the most wonderful facility in the world and overload it, and everyone loses. It's, it's a, it just becomes a very, you know, unsatisfactory situation. Those are my main points, and thank you for your time.
Should we have a 25 meter pool or a 50 meter pool?
In my mind, there's really no question. If, you know, if you look at the future, which is difficult to project, the 50 meter pool gives the maximum flexibility. And now, you know, the depth issues and all the other design issues, I think, well, I just, I personally have, you know, experienced swimming primarily in 50 meter pools, and their flexibility is just, you know, so much, so much better than something shorter.
Approximately how many master swimmers do you think there are in Newport Beach?
I couldn't even make a guess. The, the, you know, Saturday-
Five, 10, 150, 1,000?
Hundreds. And the other factor is, is a, you know, this is a regional sport, so people, you know, don't stay in their community, they travel around, and, you know, the summer we have ocean swim races just about every weekend, and people travel all up and down the coast. The same thing happens with people in a masters program just for practice. You know, they drive to where the group is working out or where the group could give space, so that, you know, the numbers, I think there's, there's three informal groups working out at Corona del Mar, and if they're all there at the same time along the swim lessons and water polo, you know, that's, that's circle swimming in lanes with three to, three to four people.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question, and that is, Harbor Pool, is that a shallow end, deep end pool? In other words, three and a half, four feet on one end, or is that a deep, deep pool?
I think Newport Harbor is graduated.
You can say it again?
I think Newport Harbor is graduated, it's not a constant-
So it starts out on one end, the shallow end, at three and a half or so?
Right.
And, and what about Corona del Mar?
Corona del Mar's the same thing, it's a, it has a very, I guess, unique configuration because it's got a, it's got a ledge in the deep end so that you, you know, you're not hanging on to the gutter, you're standing on a ledge. In the shallow end, it's configured so that there's, you know, somewhat of a graduated depth, but, you know, it's a good, almost half the pool for, for lessons and recreational swimming and lap swimming, that, you know, they all work in that depth.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blue wanted to give something?
Mayor, members of city council, staff, my name is Craig Blue, I'm head coach of the YMCA of Orange County Swimming Team, which has three youth swimming teams at the three different branches. I'm also a master swimming coach at the YMCA. Try to cut a lot of this out for you so we can hear the, have the parents speak. Had 32 years of public service experience, 25 years in planning, 24 of which were the city of Newport Beach, five years with the revenue division of the city of Newport Beach. Prior to that, my planning career, I worked for three years for Riverside Planning Department. During that same period of time, I coached swimming for the Riverside Swim Club, and was very fortunate to have one little girl that I coached make it to two-time Olympian. During my high school days and college days, I was a swimmer, I have a degree in economics, and I have a minor in community recreation. I thank you for this opportunity to come and speak to you about the pool needs in the city of Newport Beach. As the parents started coming to me as they were going through the process, the hearing process, they were looking at drawings and saying, why can't we just extend this 25 meter pool to a 50 meter pool? There was no desire on their part to exclude anybody or any group of swimmers at the YMCA, and there was absolutely no intention on their part to have a competition pool. I hope that makes you feel better and rest easy, there was never any intention to have a competition pool at all. Swimming meets are a programming decision, swimming meets are secured through bids, parents' groups usually take responsibility for those swimming meets, they take financial responsibility, liabilities, there is no parents' group at the YMCA. Again, conducting meets, if there is a concern on the part of the city, that, that could be handled through the operating agreement. What does a 50 meter pool offer? Well, when the board of supervisors approved funding for this project, it was their understanding and intent that the facility has some sort of a regional draw to it. The YMCA's current operation is consistent with that. YMCA members come from Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, Huntington Beach, Westminster, Fountain Valley, San Antas, and Irvine, just to name a few cities. I understand that some people come as far as Garden Grove to participate at the YMCA. I understand that some people come as far as Garden Grove to participate at the YMCA. That's quite a service area, and it's quite a population. We kind of think about future growth along the county corridor, where we see quite a bit of development in terms of large lots being redeveloped with single-family homes and condominiums, many, many new units. The 25-meter pool provides 1 and 1/3 basketball courts in size in terms of water space. So when you put in a 25-meter pool, the dimension works out to about 1 and 1/3 basketball courts. And that's a pretty small amount of water for a service area that large. A 50-meter pool would provide more water space, be more inclusive and more encompassing. In the Newport Mesa area, there is only one municipal pool. That is a municipal pool in the city of Costa Mesa at the Downtown Recreation Center. That is a four-lane by 25-yards swimming pool. That is smaller than a basketball court. We used that pool facility this winter at Christmas time to practice because our pool was being cleaned. That is the entire municipal water space in the Newport Mesa area. There is, of course, there are private pools, and there is some shared agreement. That's why there is such a big demand for public water space, particularly locally. We read articles in the newspaper about people who were swimming until 10:00 at night. As was discussed, there were a number of surveys, and I'm not going to go through that. You can read it, but it was clear that water, aquatics and swimming were top priority in those surveys. There was a town hall workshop conducted about one year ago. At that time, the parents in, on the swim team and some of the lap swimmers went to that meeting, and two out of the three working groups at that workshop were requested specifically a larger pool at the dimension of 50 meters. Surveys prior to that did not ask for anything in terms of specific size. It was very general in nature. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the swim team at the local YMCA here, the Newport Beach YMCA. We hit a high with very little promotion of about 90 swimmers. I think it was 89 to be exact. At the year-end banquet, we had 75 swimmers that we considered to swim through the entire season, one-year season. Of that, only 33 were performance swimmers. Only 33. Less than half were performance swimmers. The majority of the kids in that program are recreation fitness swimmers. I can't tell you how much and how important it is for the youth of our communities to have swim. Their thumbs are the most skilled parts of their bodies. They're not very well-fit. I can attest to that. It takes a lot of work, about a year, to bring a swimmer into good fitness, and we've had wonderful examples of this.
Do you mean thumbs from video games? What do you mean?
Yes. Highly skilled thumbs from playing their video games.
About how much longer do you need to have, Craig?
Pardon?
About how much longer do you need to have?
Just a couple of minutes.
Okay.
One of the things I'd like to also point out as master swim coach, I have swimmers that range in age from 24 to 70 years old. In fact, the 70-year-old beats some of the 40-year-olds. I also want to stress the fact that the importance of having a warm-water pool for seniors is a very important consideration to this site. The senior warm-water pool is very important. The 50-meter pool does not limit aquatic recreation in any way. It creates more pool space and creates greater availability of water. A large portion of the time, the lanes will be 25 yards in direction, but this month, April 22nd, the long-course season starts. Some of the swimmers that we will be sending to long-course meets have not swum in a 50-meter pool yet. And as attested to by Randy, it's a shock. It really is. The swimming style is different. They need to be training in a 50-meter pool to successfully swim in that kind of a competition. There is great value to open-water swimmers because swimming every, turning every 25 yards is, is, makes swimming very simple because most of it's a glide on a push-off. Another advantage of swimming in a 50-meter pool is when you go and swim in a 25-meter pool, boy, it's like a puddle, okay? And you get much, much better performances. So I don't think there's anybody here who'll dispute the value of recreation, I mean, recreational swimming or even performance swimming. So I, I urge the city council to, to consider the 50-meter pool very seriously, and I think it would provide for the future needs of the community. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any, any questions in the council? Okay. I'd like to now open this up to the, somebody from the Santa Ana Heights, PAC?
I'm Barbara Venezia. I'm chairman of the Santa Ana Heights Redevelopment Agency Project Advisory Committee.
Barbara, how long do you need to have?
I need to have just a few minutes.
Okay, five minutes.
In 2000, the PAC was first introduced to the concept of a community center project, and I led this charge. Along with a few other PAC members, the first property we found was the Cole property down on Cypress Street. The original scope of this project was to include one community room, a small pool, a tennis court, a large outside green belt with play equipment for children, and stables for horses. The Cole property was for sale for $3.5 million. We could not get the city or the county to get behind that project for several different reasons. One was the big question was who would run it and who would maintain it. The redevelopment agency cannot maintain and could not run it, and the city wanted no part of that. So, we needed to find another facility, and we needed to answer those questions. And the other thing that was the big question was the facility had to operate in the black. So in 2003, the YMCA came into the picture. They were selling the property. They were, the city was looking at it to build low-cost housing. The community didn't want that, so we figured this is a win-win situation. We could keep the programs that the Y currently offered, increase the community rooms, because according to the surveys, you see, people wanted the community rooms, and the community also wanted to keep the programs that the Y currently had. The city would run the facility, would own the facility, and we'd enter into an agreement with the Y. Now, the most important part of that agreement would be that the facility would operate in the black. In all the surveys that were done, there was no talk of a 50-meter pool. In fact, this is the third conversation we've had about this, and it has been explained time and time again. The PAC, the surrounding community, the architects, and the city staff all support the 25 by 25 or 25 by 30-meter pool. There's several different reasons that this doesn't work. 50-meter pool physically does not fit into the space of the current plan. We've already spent $70,000 with the architects, and this plan has been presented to the surrounding community who all bought off on that. The homes that are directly behind the Y do not want the noise, the traffic, that the larger pool brings. And let's not forget, this isn't an aquatic center. This is a community center. Parking is a very big issue here, and as you heard, with the bigger pool, we have parking issues. There are strong questions if geologically it would even be feasible, and if so, to build a larger pool, what would the cost be, and who supports that cost? The building square footage may have to decrease, losing community room space, workout space, all which the community strongly wants. The longer this process is delayed, the higher the cost of the facility, and everybody agrees with this. It started out at 11.5. Then it went to 14 million. Then the PAC in June approved going up to 18 million dollars. The current plan you saw are being tossed around at 25 million and up. The redevelopment agency has many projects, $30 million of projects on the table. There is no more money for this, and at 25 million dollars, the PAC will not support it, and neither will the local community. The financial plan for the center also changes drastically if you take that smaller pool out of the picture. We've got three pools in, in diagram number one that Dave showed you. That's the financial plan that we were working for. If this creates a deficit now with the bigger pool, who picks up that extra 200, 300, $400,000 a year? Redevelopment money can't do it. So that means that it's up to the citizens of the city of Newport Beach to keep putting money into a project that, number one, was paid for by redevelopment money; number two, had a plan that operated it in the black, and now it operates in the red. It would be fiscally irresponsible to do this. The warm-water seniors programs, they go away, and let's face it. The outdoor water facility for small children is most likely to be deleted too, and the whole focus of creating a multi-use facility for the broadest aspect of this community now changes to a single-use aquatic facility. And at this point, we need to ask ourselves, is this really the community concept that we want to bring forward? And we think not. At the April PAC meeting, which was last week, the PAC voted, and we are going to reevaluate this project, depending on how you vote and how you move forward with it. It's not an aquatic facility. If you need an aquatic facility, then the proper thing to do is to go and find the land and build a proper aquatic facility, not build it on the back of these residents and not use redevelopment agency dollars to do it. So the PAC will reevaluate this program, and there is very little, little support by the tons of emails that I am getting as the PAC chairman to continue at 18 million dollars. So it may be that we need to find something else for this facility. We may need to just scrap this facility and find another community-centered facility that actually meets the needs of this redevelopment agency community, because this is spiraling out of control.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other group that is represented here that, what, what groups are they back here? Okay, who else over there? You're representing the seniors group, and you represent a particular group?
West Santa Ana Heights.
Anybody else have a group?
Is there a Dave Salo here?
Dave!
No.
Okay. We're, in order to get as many different groups, could we have three minutes on this, please?
Yeah, it'll be quick. My name is Robert Hanley. I've lived in West Santa Ana Heights over 30 years. I feel at the point right now that we're being made a football of, a political issue by the individual that just spoke to you. She has aspirations of taking her job. I'll do my best to see that that doesn't happen.
Can we limit this to the discussion of the swimming position, please?
I'm saying that we are not being representative. A statement was made that the community was being representative. We have never been representative by the PAC group. Although our monies are in the PAC effort, I can guarantee you, if it's put to a vote, which it will be, they'll lose. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the YMCA representative, please?
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, my name is Art Wanlon. I'm the CEO and president of the YMCA of Orange County. My background briefly is 35 years as a professional with the YMCA, have operated and been part of operations of facilities ranging from 100,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet with and without aquatics facilities. We entered into this project, you've heard the history, and do not want to repeat all of that, but we are looking at this and approaching this as a comprehensive plan, and each segment of the site that you saw really needs to operate together to, to make the whole work. Today, we've been focused on the aquatics piece of it, but it is going to have a tremendous impact on the, on the facility piece. One of the, as the pool increases, so does the need for lockers and showers. The current building design for the showers is for a smaller pool. If we put in the larger, that's going to impact that. Our position has been, we will support whatever the county, or pardon me, whatever the community would like to have in whatever the surveys say that, that we should do. The concern we have over the 50-meter pool is strictly a cost, strictly operating cost, is that the model and the financial model that we have would not support the operating cost for a 50-meter pool. So we would need to have, we would need to have support there. The, the other piece is the planning time. This, this project has been underplanned for over three years, and the cost escalation keeps going up. And so we would like to see a decision to, to move forward so that we can get the, get the project up and going. Finally, the business model. As was pointed out, we entered into this with the agreement that if we operated this facility, that there would not be a cost to the city. And in order to do that, we needed to have the fitness facility, the fitness piece to generate the revenue to offset the other pieces, the gymnasium, the community rooms, and the pools. We looked, there would be a level of cost recovery that we built into that operating cost. And so the, the piece that we see, as we get more aquatics facilities, their higher-cost recovery, which we would need to have, have some support in that, in that particular area. Thank you.
Thank you. We had somebody that was, said they were representing the seniors group. I guess we have two seniors groups.
Two seniors groups. Mr. Chairman and members of the city council, I'm Shirley Conger, and I live in Corona Del Mar, and I've been going to the Y since 1971 regularly, and I swim several times a week in the lap pool. By the way, many of the seniors swim laps as well as using the small, deep pool, and I think there's room for both. But one thing I do want to say that, is that the population, the crowding at the Y has gone up steadily through the years. And now, on, on peak times, when people go and swim before work or come right after work and swim, it's too crowded. For example, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings, there are, there are six lanes, and three of them are for masters and three for the regular lap swimmers, and it's too crowded. It, it doesn't accommodate all of the people. If we had a 50-meter pool, we would have 14 lanes rather than six, which would accommodate both groups. And I think there's room, not only for the lap, for the 50-meter pool, but also for the deep-water pool, where, which is an exercise pool, and it is in use now. I think this whole project will be a wonderful addition to community services in, in Newport Beach, and it will improve the quality of life. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Okay, can we have the other representative of the...
Mayor and council members, my name's Kathy Anderson. I'm a native of Costa Mesa, and so my concern is, as was expressed, that if we build it, they will come, which we all know is long-time residents. We build it, and they come. And so what I've heard about the competitive pool in Randy's presentation, of course, our existing membership, the YMCA would be extremely concerned for that. I really appreciate that it was spoken up, that this is primarily a recreational facility, and that swim lessons is a priority, and then the therapeutic. But the reason I wanted to get up and speak was just to express a real concern on behalf of the seniors, which is the group that I swim with in the deep-water workout pool, in that there, if, if that pool were not in existence, there would be something of 180 members that would most likely give up their membership. And at present, that, that's just 90% of the folks that go through there, and that would generate, you know, 97,000 a year, which isn't a huge cost, but if we, you know, just have a 25 by 25 pool at 127, you know, our present membership really does contribute to the upcare and keeping of the pool. And so I just, the reason I want to stand up and just speak on behalf of the seniors, I really appreciate your respect for them and your concern for them, and just to stand up, you know, to, that they be a priority, a really priority in this situation. And so, thank you.
How many people in the audience would like to talk on this issue? I'm just kind of, I want to get a rough idea. Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. You know, I'm thinking, I'd like to get the opinion of the council. That's going to put us at three minutes apiece, well into 6:00. Should we schedule another study session on this to where we can get into this in more detail?
I would rather, I think some of these folks, you know, they have other activities in their lives now that they're here. If we could have them continue, and I know many of them want to be able to speak, that would be my preference.
You could limit it, I mean, it doesn't have to be three minutes either. You could limit it to one or two. What's the mood of the council? We do have this closed session that has a very significant...
I'd like to hear him speak. I think maybe give them two minutes each.
All right, we'll do... All right, we'll do two minutes. Councilmember Deagle would like, is there a Dave J. Lo? Is that correctly? Okay. Who would like to, those people that would like to speak, please move down forward so that we don't have a minute in between speakers. So we can get as many as possible in the next half hour. And I am going to cut it off at about two minutes to six.
Yes, hello. I'm speaking on behalf of Rick Dayton. He's very sorry he couldn't be here, and he thanks you very much.
And what is your name?
My name is Charlie Gambetta.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
I have been involved with this project as a member of PAC since the fall of two thousand and two. PAC was able to persuade the county to spend thirty thousand dollars for an independent feasibility study by Razanow and Spivak Group. That feasibility study used as a model and phased remodel addition project to the existing buildings and facilities. Included in the scope of the work was a rehabilitation of the existing two pools and pool deck. RSG gave an analysis of construction costs and income stream that showed a renovated, enlarged YMCA building with renovated pools and new gymnasium, fitness areas, locker rooms, and community spaces, which could be built for seven and a half million dollars. Furthermore, after studying the YMCA pro forma, RSG concluded that the working model of a community center, fitness facility run by the YMCA could be financially successful. In two thousand and three, the Board of Supervisors reviewed conceptual plans prepared by PAC and, and the RS, and the RSG, independent feasibility study, and then awarded eleven and a half million dollars to finance the purchase of the property from the YMCA and the design and construction of the project. After the project was approved and financed by the Board of Supervisors, two independent studies were conducted. PB and A, a marketing research company from Florida, was employed by the YMCA to conduct a survey to determine marketability of the project, and especially community desires for the new facility. A second survey conducted by Professor Michael Blasey of California State Long Beach was commissioned by the city of Newport Beach. The results of both surveys were very similar. The community had a strong desire, and I repeat that, the community had a strong desire to see more swimming aquatic facilities and programs, more facilities and programs for seniors, more facilities for fitness and recreation, more facilities for banquets, cultural events, and cooking classes, and more facilities for picnics.
Mr. Gambetta, how much longer do you have?
It's about another half page, sir.
Okay, well, we have heard about all of those studies already in the earlier presentations, and so did you have a particular comment on, as far as the type of pool use, or that you would have, that you can sum up in about one sentence? Because we, remember, we're getting, trying to get as many people as possible through.
Once again, I'm speaking on behalf of Rick Dayton. This is his letter. He couldn't be here today. But it's a very compelling letter, as I read it, and I'll just read you this one paragraph here. When Swim Coach Blue was asked why a fifty-meter pool was important, at the last PAC meeting, he answered that it was mainly to help young competitive swimmers to become accustomed to competing at a fifty-meter length. He mentioned that the younger swimmers who only train in a twenty-five-meter pool would be intimidated when they compete in a fifty-meter pool. Both Coach Blue and David Kiff agreed that the most lap swimmers prefer the twenty-five-meter length pool for exercising. I think that's the main, main.
I think that in future testimony, we have heard about all of the studies, and we recognize those, we have copies of them up here, so you don't need to remind us about that. We're interested in getting your feeling on the, really, the, the type of pool facility that you would like to see. So come on up.
Good afternoon. My name's Tim Stokes. I have served as a manager of the Board on the YMCA. I'm currently a PAC member, and I actually live in the neighborhood. The one reason why, the reason that the PAC exists is because it's a, what we call a project area, and it has impact to the area. What is being proposed now is more of an impact to the area, simply because of traffic, and it doesn't keep, keep in time with simply a community center. So I have objections to another program implement with this YMCA. We already have conceded with the indoor basketball court for the program, and that thing for the benefit of the city. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is George Robertson, and I'm a longtime resident of Santa Ana Heights. My family were one of the original purchasers in nineteen sixty-two in West Santa Ana Heights. I purchased my home in that same area in nineteen eighty-eight. I grew up in this area. I swam at the Y. I swam and played water polo at Newport Harbor High School. I played water polo at UCI. I was a lifeguard here for the city of Newport Beach for over twelve years. I understand the importance of aquatics, and I have my kids in the aquatics, and I understand the, the impacts to trying to find pool times. And if you go for a smaller pool, what happens is that you end up taking from Paul to Peter. You've already heard before about the impact, trying to get things scheduled. If you go with a fifty-meter pool, you'd be able to have recreational swimming, swim lessons, and swim team all at the same time. And then that would, talk about quality of life, I mean, when my kids are swimming in swim teams, I could do my recreational swimming at the same time. I'd be able to spend a lot more time with my kids. Right now, you know, the kids have swimming, we get them home, get them fed, and then I go off and I do my recreational swimming at night. Okay? So, you know, talk about the quality of life, talk about the impact on the community, I think it's much better. Little kitty, flash, flash area, if you're going to give us something, give that up. I mean, I'm a parent. I understand what little kids need, but you know what? That's not going to be a draw. If you want this to be a community draw, put in the fifty-meter pool. That's going to be much more benefit than anything else that we have out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Sloka. I'm a longtime member of the PAC, probably over twelve years. We started on this project for, for the sake of the community. We felt that the three pools was a better fit for the community. It's a smaller area. We can put three uses in there. If you put in the fifty-meter pool and you make it a multi-use pool, it becomes a no-use pool. You cannot regulate the temperature of a fifty-meter pool. I don't care what kind of jets you put in there. The recreational people are going to say it's too, too cold for them to swim in, and you're going to cut out the seniors, unless you build a separate pool for them. We studied this, this project for the last three or four years, and the, the community has, has had its input, and we have listened to them, and that's why we came up with that, with that cost. If you put in the fifty-meter pool and this cost escalates, I don't think the PAC is going to support it. And if the PAC doesn't support it, the Board of Supervisors aren't going to support it, so you might be building this on your own. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or I guess it's almost dinnertime. I'm Beverly Sean Holtz, and I have been going to the Y for eleven years, and I use the deep-water pool. And I agree with the PAC members. The facility is too small to handle what you're talking about putting in there. And I don't know about you, but I don't want to pay for a fifty-meter pool. And I, I do want to say, I really feel bad...
Please talk to us.
I'm sorry. I really feel bad about the parents whose children really need a fifty-meter pool. Go for it. You spend money for all these conferences and, and for help with this and that and the other thing. Spend for getting a proper facility for a fifty-meter pool, so that they'll have someplace to go. And leave us fifteen years alone. Let us be there. The, the dressing rooms are so small. The room you have for dressing rooms is inadequate right now. And as far as the timing for the six lanes, you can regulate your time so that the master swimmers can go at a different time than the lap poolers. You don't have to all go at the same time. We have as many, oh, it's so dry. We have as many as eighteen to twenty women, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, when I go into the deep-water pool. It's even too crowded for that. But we get along, and we manage to do all of our exercises. And believe me, I'll miss it. And that's, and I won't go when it's that large, even if it's, which it doesn't appear to be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Shirley Feller. I've been swimming laps for twenty-five years. I'm interested in just the lap pool. Twenty-five yards is fine for me. But my neighbor called and said, now, I can't be there. Can you go down and talk for me and say, I'm in the, I'm older than you, and I'm in the, the warm-water pool, the deep pool? And she said, the old people really need it, so would you tell them that they, that the older people really need the deep-water pool? And if we can't do it with the fifty and have that too, it'd be better to have the twenty-five and have it also. Thank you.
Okay, let's cut down the question. I, I'll have to admit, I have been lobbied by several of my generation for that, keeping that pool around.
Hi, my name is Susan Stark. I'm a resident of Newport Beach, and my daughter's in the swim team at the YMCA. And what we care about is just more water. We want to be able to work with everybody, be with everybody, everybody there, and everybody be happy. So if we could do a fifty-meter that provides for recreation, lap swimming, and the swim team, that would be wonderful. We just want to move and work with everybody so everyone's happy. We're not trying to push anyone out, but we certainly do need more water space. Thank you.
Mayor, council, my name is Brett Clement. I live in Santa Ana Heights. And I, I don't think everybody in the Santa Heights, Santa Ana Heights area has been truly approached about this whole issue, because I certainly wasn't. And I didn't really know about it until the last two weeks. My kids are members of the YMCA. I'm a member of the YMCA. I was a member of the YMCA back in nineteen seventy-two as a child, swimming there, getting swim lessons and learning how to swim. I think what's being conveyed to you guys right now is that we need a competition pool. We don't. My kids aren't on the swim team. My kids go there to swim. I need a swim, swimming pool too, because I can no longer run, hurt knees and all the, you know, the whole thing. Another thing that we could have done over the last three years is we could have created a fund through the YMCA to help facilitate the cost of a pool there at, at the YMCA facility. It never really came up as, as a, as an issue or an idea to do so. And so I've already put in motion to create a fund to help with the, the cost of the pool. And we're working on that right now. We're building a larger facility right now. With that facility, they plan on bringing in more membership. With more membership, there is no way we are going to be able to facilitate all those people in a pool and make time for everybody. There's just no way. It's a small, tiny pool. I can't even go in there and swim myself as, as an adult member. My kids can't go in and swim, because there's no time. And the time that they can, other, other user groups are using it. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tom Edson. I am the former aquatics coordinator for the city of Costa Mesa, the former aquatic supervisor for the city of Laguna Beach, and I spent a good ten years of my life programming aquatic facilities in local municipalities. I have a sense that, and I'm sure you do as a result of your studies, that there is an increasing demand, variable demand, for more and more aquatic space in the city. One of the things we might want to consider is not necessarily focusing on one project. In fact, what we might want to do is look at the possibility of utilizing the space at Newport Harbor and Corona Del Mar much more effectively. My evaluation of the present pool use time available at Newport Harbor and Corona Del Mar is, I would give it an F in terms of grade. Our recreation department has done a fair job. We do have a joint use agreement with these facilities and the school district, but it needs to be explored. Rather than concentrate our focus on this small box located at Santa Ana Heights, let's look at the possibility of spreading our interest across three pools rather than two. I will give you an adviso, which is the following. It's very difficult to bring some of these user groups into compatible use. The central problem, as the seniors have made clear to you, is heating a pool to a convenient temperature that makes it possible for them to exercise. The demography of the situation is, we're going to have more and more and more seniors, and it's important to accommodate that group. Increasingly, we have a group of swimmers who want to swim, who negotiate. You asked previously, how many master swimmers are there in Newport Beach? There are untold hundreds, because many of us are going to pools outside of the area. Let's look at the possibility of renegotiating our open-hour swim policy with the school district. You might want to take a look at the arrangement the city of Laguna Beach has with the high school there, which is a multi-use facility. It's open for swimming ten hours a day. Thank you.
I appreciate your suggestion, and I wanted to let you know that I, you know, that the same thoughts had crossed my mind, and I went over to the Burgesson Pool, and they're packed in over there like sardines. So for us to demand more time at the Burgesson Pool and at Newport Harbor Pool, you know, that would mean that existing groups would get less time. So I, I think putting pressure on those facilities, you know, we would be kind of hitting people against each other, and I don't want to do that.
Not necessarily. What we have at Burgesson Pool is a very short time period in which we're jamming together quite a few groups, yes. So it is very tight. However, we have no masters access, no swimming access to the pool, both pools, when they are virtually empty. From nine o'clock in the morning to two o'clock in the afternoon, those pools are empty. From twelve o'clock to five o'clock on Saturday and Sunday, again, unless there's a scheduled conference, water polo, or swimming, those pools, again, are sit empty. And I think it'd be responsible of us to at least appraise the possibility that we might be able to move some programming around and accommodate some of the more strenuous interests in Santa Ana Heights.
Thank you.
My name is Arlie Modus, and I've lived in the Newport Mesa area since nineteen forty-four. So I'm well acquainted with the YMCA, have been taking my children there for all kinds of things, especially the swimming. I am now using the deep-water pool for therapy for myself. I would not be able to walk at all if it hadn't been for that pool. The one thing I need to say that, about not getting rid of it, of course, but also to add, make it wheelchair accessible, where there'd be more people be able to get down to the pool. There is no, if you can't walk, you can't get down to the pool. And so I thought that I'd stick my two cents in about that, the wheelchair people, so there'd be more use, be more people coming to the Y for that purpose. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mike Smith. I live up in Santa Ana Heights. We have been members of the YMCA. We've also been involved in the junior guard swim program there. I support the twenty-five by twenty-five pool, along with the children's play area and the deep-water therapy pool. I also would support the twenty-five by thirty-five pool. I am becoming concerned about the cost and, and how much monies the county and PAC and everybody is essentially putting into it, so I would like to see it go forward, but I do think there needs to be an evaluation of the cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Dolores Hording. I live in Newport Beach. I'm a little bit disappointed that there is not any information for the public at this meeting, that we had a slide presentation and you all had hard copy. I'm also disappointed that you didn't start the meeting at three-thirty to allow more people in the audience to attend, but I do applaud you for extending the time that you did to us. I've been attending PAC meetings since probably two thousand and three, and I've been familiar with the planning of the community center. I also have been attending city council meeting, unlike some of the people here, since probably, how long, Don, would you say, Mayor Don? A long time.
I'm not going to say too long.
Okay, all right, because you don't want to say how old I am. Anyway, I remember the evening when Mr. Slaughter came, and it was about the Marion Burgesson Pool at Corona Del Mar, and I think he's the same gentleman, it could be, that came here and, and he blew the whistle. And so I honestly feel that we're trying to squeeze twenty pounds of concrete into a five-pound bag. I have learned from Councilmember Selich that if you have the money, you can build it. My concern here is that this is a community center, and this is what it's supposed to be. And it's supposed to service the needs of the seniors. And I also feel that we do need a full-blown aquatic center in this city, or that is a demand that's being heard. I, I went to the outreach meetings at the PAC. I met the people. I went to the meet and greets and all the rest of it. Nobody was clamoring or shouting or screaming for a fifty-meter pool. That's something that's new. And if that's something that our community does need, then we need to look at servicing the needs of our community. I've been attending the, the finance facility meeting, so have you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Curry. And one of the things that you've been doing is a master plan of how we're going to spend our certificates of participation. So one of the things we need to ask to that, add to that master plan is perhaps, since you're involved in these fairs committee, is I know that you want to take the top of Coyote Canyon landfill, and Councilmember Curry, I know Coyote Canyon like the back of my hand. I have slides and... I have slides and video of the closure of Coyote Canyon. I want, I want to finish, please. Thank you.
How much longer?
Since, I'll talk fast. Since you want to build a golf course up there, like I don't already, and, you know, like a golf course with a community, with a clubhouse, okay? I really think that you need to look at that facility, and I think that facility might service the needs of a full-blown aquatic center with the parking and the spectator events, and really a first-class, world-renowned center. Trying to squeeze these 20 pounds of concrete into a three-pound bag just isn't going to cut it for what the needs of our community are today. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak on this particular issue?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Rhonda Borth. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Costa Mesa, and I have three children, including myself, all members of the Y using the aquatics facility. Personally, my children, this is their form of exercise. It's not just a competitive sport. It is where my daughter gets her workout. She's not as concerned about the competitiveness as she is about the exercise. If we had more surface space for more people to be able to work out, play in the pool, swim in the pool, everyone, not just the seniors, not just the kids, but to accommodate more people, then more people would reap the benefits of swimming as an exercise. That's my support of 50-meter pool.
Thank you. All right, it looks like that we've wound down a little bit. At a study session, we are not, we do not make determinations or vote on which direction to go. What we do is give the staff direction as to what to bring back to the city council at a regular meeting for us to make a decision. So I will open this up to the council now to see what your thoughts are on this. Councilmember Daigle?
First, I'd like to thank my colleagues in the council for the patience to hear the public. I know they've come a long way, and that for some of you, it's not often that you're in the political window, so certainly this issue has touched your lives. I think it's a very good information sharing forum. I want to thank the staff and our experts and our architect for their input. One suggestion on approach is we do have a city council committee that's been looking at the agreement and aspects of the agreement. Perhaps if we could meet further with staff, discuss some of these issues, and then come back to council with a recommendation.
Anybody else in the council having a thought or concept on that? Okay, so that the Santa Ana Heights redevelopment committee, community center committee, will look at this and come back with some sort of recommendation to the council on which direction we go from here?
The city council committee.
The city council committee, that's my name. All right, then, thank you very much, all of you, for coming. I know as far as I'm concerned, I am very concerned about recreational uses within the pool. I feel that the direction that I'm going is that I don't think that we want to put together a meat pool out there. I think that I want to make sure that the seniors are adequately taken care of, and I would like to have someplace for my grandson to come and learn to swim. So I'd like to have the youthful, very young spaces within a swimming pool. It does sound like to me, because of all the number of people that are trying to use this pool, that the square feet of water may need to be a little bit more than the 25 by 25. Now, I don't have any idea where we go from that, but it sounds like to me that there's a demand out there, but that's at least the direction in which I'm going. Thank you. Thank you. We will now adjourn to a closed session.